My name is Rich Mucci. I'm the Chair of the Winchester Select Board. With me this evening, we have Vice Chair Anthea Brady, Members John Fallon, Michelle Pryor, Michael Bencourt, and Town Manager Beth Rudolph. We have a busy agenda. It's our annual licensing meeting where we have to approve and then sign all the licenses. So we're warming up our hands, but I think we're a little behind schedule. So I'm going to start right in with the public hearings. So because it's past 7:40, we have a change of manager for the American Civic Association, Inc., 117 Swanton Street. Does anyone hear on that hearing? Come on up, sir.
Right here.
Yep. Why don't you sit down, just state your name.
Name is Michael Sorica.
All right. And you're the petitioner for this change of manager?
Yes. Well, I'm the potential manager.
Manager?
Yeah.
Sure you want to do it?
I'm not sure, but I'm going.
Before I open it up to any board members for questions or comments, is there anyone here from the public that wishes to make a comment on this change of manager public hearing? All right, seeing no one, I will close public comment. Is there anything you want to add, sir?
No, sir.
Okay, the application seems to be in order with staff. So any questions from any board members? Discussion?
What's your current involvement with?
I'm on the board.
Okay. And how long you been on the board?
Oh, just maybe two years.
So you know what you're getting yourself into?
I knew the person that did it before.
Okay.
Anything else? Is there a motion?
Motion to, yeah. Motion to approve Michael Sorica as the new manager of the American Civic Association.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing on and passes. Thank you, sir. Good luck.
Thank you.
Next up, we have a second public hearing in all alcohol beverage packaged store license for Nouvelle Holdings LLC, doing business as Nouvelle Maison at 32 Church Street. All right.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for the record, Attorney Stephen Cicatelli representing Nouvelle Holdings LLC, doing business as Nouvelle Maison. With me this evening is Celine Kimberly and Thomas Kimberly, the managers and members of the LLC. We're here before you this evening requesting a common victualist license, all alcoholic package store license, and I believe a food vendor's license. The premises are 30, AKA 32 Church Street. The members might be aware, that's the former, the patisserie. The space has been vacant. My clients live in Winchester. They wanted to make an investment in Winchester, so they have negotiated a long-term lease for the premises. And what's being proposed is basically something similar to that which was there, but more of an enhancement. In the packets that I've just passed, there's a copy of a menu that you might want to review. And basically, what is being proposed is prepared foods, charcuterie, hot, cold beverages, lunches, breads, croissants, et cetera. You can see from the floor plan, the seating is really rather minimal. There obviously will not be table service. There's only 12 seats being proposed. My clients are planning extensive renovations to the interior and with the approval of the landlord and other town boards, perhaps some facade improvements. If you look at the application, you can see that we're not requesting a pledge of the liquor license. There'll be no financing involved. My clients are using their own funds to fund the renovation. Celine was actually born in France, which is where she gained her appreciation of, obviously, of food. And basically, there is evidence of citizenship for both of the members, as well as certificates of good standing issued by the State of Delaware and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. A DBA certificate was filed under the name Nouvelle Maison. In the packet that I just gave you, there are some certifications that I wanted you to have a copy of. There's the Serve Safe Alcohol Certificate. My client has applied for the Serve Safe Food Manager Certificate. That exam is pending. We will provide that at a later date. There's also a certification from the American Heart Association regarding Choke Saver Course Certification. There's a letter of recommendation. My affidavit in accordance with Chapter 138, Section 15A, that I did in fact send notice, certified mail and regular mail, actually, to all of the abutters, as well as churches within 500 feet in accordance with the statute. And then again, just the basic menu to show what was, what is being proposed. This obviously could change and will probably be increased, but just to give you an idea. And what's really being planned, unfortunately, with the closure of this business, and if you call the wine and cheese store, the Brugers, this is sort of a merger of the two, and I think it fills, you know, a void in terms of the downtown area. And we think it'll be a very good fit for the downtown area. And the very last page is just a bio on my client, so that you can see again where the food experience is derived from. And again, in a nutshell, this is a, in the food industry, as the board is well aware, particularly with food service, new businesses, the, you know, success, failure rate is in the 90th percentile. But this is a situation where... success, failure rate is in the ninetieth percentile. But this is a situation where you, this is not a franchise. You have local residents that want to invest in the community. There is no financing involved. They did not purchase the business, so, and they have the business acumen along with the, you know, with the food experience. So I feel that it very much would be a success. We have a vacant storefront, obviously, now, but I think it's nice to see a use similar to that which was there before. And I think it's a very good fit for the downtown area. Be happy to answer any questions, board members may have. Oh, and also, Celine is being proposed as the manager under the liquor license also.
Thank you for that explanation. I'm going to open it up to public comment. Is there anyone here from the public that wishes to make a comment on this liquor license? State your name.
Hi, I'm Brynlee Murphy-Reuter. I'm good friends with Celine and Tom. I live here in Winchester as well, just over by Redmer Station on Lakeview Terrace. And I'm so excited about the potential of this business to come into town. I think it's really, really a wonderful concept. It's going to open up another place where families can go, grab a little snack after school or on the weekends, as well as a couple of things for, you know, dinner parties or having people over. I just think it's a really, really wonderful idea and something the town really, really needs.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here for public comment on this license? All right, seeing no one else, I'll close the public comment portion of this license application hearing. Any questions for, for any board members?
I've got a couple. Looking at the menu, what are your proposed hours of operation, like seven to three?
Yeah, if you, if you look at the Coman Victulus application, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, seven to seven, and then Saturday, nine AM to seven PM, Sunday, nine to seven PM.
And this license allows you to sell bottles on the premises, doesn't allow you to serve?
It does not allow to serve, no. That'd be a different type of license, correct.
Other questions?
I'll just say thank you very much for bringing this great business, looks like a great business, to Winchester and certainly keeping Lipaticity and the, really, the history of that business going. I think there's a really demand for this there. It seems like your background is perfect to do this, so I wish you the best of luck. And I'm glad that you did the program at BU with Eason as well. It's a great one. I've done that before with him. It's great. Yep, so it's really looking forward to this. How long do you think it's going to take to open? I ask that not, you know, for purposes of my support for it. I certainly do just, I'm curious for myself, because I want to be one of the first people in there.
Yeah. We're doing a full gut run. I know, we're working in an architect right now. We think between, you know, all the architectural plans, the actual renovation, probably late summer, early September. So that's what I'm aiming for.
Great.
So within a year, you hope?
Yes.
Okay, is that great?
Is there people?
Thank you.
I think it's great.
It's great.
Nope, sounds great. We wish you best of luck.
Thank you.
I'm sure we'll all be in there at some point.
And thank you for a thorough presentation.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we need to vote. Is there a motion?
Uh, move that we approve the all-alcoholic beverages packaged store license for Nouvelle Holdings LLC, doing business as Nouvelle Maison at thirty-two Church Street.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, it passes. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
All right. I think that closes our public hearings. So we're going to go back up to the start of our agenda and do some acceptance of donations.
Move that we accept with gratitude an EEC stabilization grant of seventeen thousand nine hundred sixty-six dollars and sixty-seven cents for the Recreation Department Kid Connection Wrap EEC Childcare License for the month of December.
Second.
Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, it passes. Next.
Move that we accept with gratitude a grant for Massachusetts Clean Water Trust Department of Environmental Protection of fifty-eight thousand dollars for a water service inventory and planning project to the town of Winchester.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, it passes. And always, we accept with gratitude those grants. So thank you very much for supporting our programs. Next up, Town Manager's report.
Thank you. So I have a few updates this evening. First up, I'm very happy to share that the town recently received the twenty twenty-three Excellence in Employee Engagement Award from Maya Wellness. That's our health insurance provider. Each year, Maya presents awards to selected accounts in various categories, and this category recognizes high employee engagement from Winchester employees over the past year. So it, you know, we have a lot of events. We have a few nice chair massage events. We also have a lot of online and in-person exercise classes and other programs that are offered. And our HR department has done a great job of publicizing those, so congratulations to our HR department. Also, earlier this month, Governor Healy signed a new act that provides for, in part, the exception to legal requirements that all receipts are to be recorded as general fund revenue for opioid settlement receipts. So I know Anthiva will miss her, her-
I wondered if that was-
...presentation at town meeting that we've had the past few years. So we have several years of opioid funds to come to the town. To date, we've had to accept them at town meeting, but this new act allows us to just take those in and put them directly into a special revenue account. So it keeps everything simpler.
You might get one more if I, yeah.
Yeah, we might have to, we might have to do something with the funds we already have, but yeah, going forward to make some-
Make a count.
To save us five minutes on the phone.
We can do a home rule petition just to accept it.
Um, Communication Study Update. I know I mentioned this last week, but I want, just wanted to mention it again. We have, we're working with the Collins Center for Public Management from UMass Boston. We did wrap up our online survey on December eighth, and we are working to develop a series of four focus groups. So two will be virtual and two will be in person. Two of them will be on how the town can improve communication with residents and businesses, and the other one will be with respect to website improvement. So those are scheduled for January sixteenth, January eighteenth, and January twenty-third. There's more information on the town's website. If anyone watching or in the audiences is interested in signing up, you can go to the town's website to sign up for one of those focus groups. And that space is limited to ten participants in each one. We had a meeting earlier this, or excuse me, last week, the first meeting of our Housing Production Plan Advisory Group. We had a great representation from many boards and committees, Select Board, Planning Board, School Committee, Housing Partnership Board, Council on Aging, Disability Access Committee, Affordable Housing Trust, and a variety of town staff, as well as the one-at-large resident that the board appointed at your last meeting. The next step will be a series of focus groups, similar to what I just talked about for the Communication Study Plan, that will be rolling out probably in late January or early February, so keep a lookout for those. Construction Updates, there's really not too much more to add beyond what we talked about last week. I am happy to say, however, that Eversource has completed their cable pulling activities, and they're taking a two-week pause for the holidays. So weather permitting, they will be back after the New Year's holiday to do, start the cable splicing activities. And I think that's all I had for this evening. Thank you.
Beth, are they still on schedule, they think, in theory, for March completion?
Yeah, I think they hope to be done with the splicing activities by late January, early February. Obviously, you know, if we get a big snow event in there, that'll kind of change their whole plan, but.
Thank you.
Yep.
Other questions for Beth?
Maybe it's a question for Rich related to when Eversource was here last week. Did we get the traffic and safety plans from them?
Staff was provided, I don't know, Beth, if you want to talk about that?
Yeah, so we did get a draft set of plans. There's a meeting on Thursday with Eversource to discuss, and that'll be for the splicing activities.
Right, which is sort of manhole focused and so slightly different. Okay.
Right, yep.
So any update in a couple of weeks, you'll let us know, but they're not working the next two weeks.
Have a nice holiday break.
I just needed a holiday break. Um, and just, you know, today was, you know, terrible weather. Just a thank you to our DPW crews that were out all day, our fire department, our police department, you know, it was a very, very busy day.
They were cleaning the drain in front of my house.
Yeah, so thank you for, for all their hard work, especially looking at this inclement weather. It was kind of a, those no-name storms can always be the worst, so.
Oh, my gosh.
I think today was no exception to that. So thank you to our hard-working crews, as always.
Seems like our roads stayed, our roads stayed open, unlike some other towns, so.
Yeah, we did have a few trees that came down, but I think they're, you know, able to clean it up pretty quickly.
Which is huge, so.
Great. All right, next up, we have, like I said, this is our annual licensing meeting, so we have a series of licenses to approve. My understanding is that for some of these, particularly the commedicular and the food vendor area, there's some work still, you know, with staff that some places need to do. So we would vote them tonight, and then, subject to staff being satisfied, they would then release those licenses as warranted. Is that right, Beth?
Yes, yep.
So I think we can do them in groups.
You can do the whole thing.
Do the whole thing?
Yep.
Even better.
Yes.
Any questions or discussion about any of these licenses?
No.
I didn't realize we sold cars at as many places as we do. It's like, wait, what? No questions.
Move that we approve the renewal of the licenses as presented for calendar year twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, it passes. Do you want to just make them subject to staff, sorry?
Subject to staff approval of-
Or staff being, complying with staff's require-
Requirements.
Requirements.
Sure.
Or should we vote it?
Let's do that.
So.
Sorry.
Uh, move that we approve the renewal of the licenses as presented for calendar year twenty twenty-four. Um, contingent on complying with staff's requirements.
Second.
Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, it passes. Thank you. All right, moving right along. Now we're into our business agenda, and our first item of business is a constable appointment, and we have three applicants. We have one new applicant, William Ryerson, Jr., and then two incumbents, Jack, uh, Ciella, might I pronounce that?
Tula.
Tula, excuse me, and Jeffrey Wolf. Thank you all for being here. We did have a fourth applicant, Steve DeRosa, who's been a constable in the town for several decades, approximately thirty years, I think, and he's decided to not do it anymore. So we thank him for his, you know, years of service to the town in this area. We wish him the best in his future endeavors. But I think at this point, we have everyone here. We'll just have William Ryerson, Jr. Come on up. We haven't interviewed you before. The other two we have interviewed, they're certainly available for questions if anyone has them, but.
Evening.
Evening. Just state your name.
Uh, Bill Ryerson, Jr.
Right, and you're applying to be a constable?
I am.
Right, sounds like third-generation constable.
Third-generation, yep.
Do you want to just tell us a little bit about yourself? Your application was very thorough, so.
Thank you. Um, I've lived in the town my whole life, graduated Winchester High School. I went on to Northeastern University, graduated with a criminal justice degree, worked for the Boston Globe after that, and the Protective Services Department, then went on to UMass Boston, where I served twenty-two years, seventeen years as a patrol sergeant. And I guess I'm semi-retired, and here I am. And this is something I've actually looked at doing for my life. I saw my father doing it for a long number of years, forty-plus years. And now that I'm coming on my retirement, I figure this is a time to, time to do it, so.
Any questions for Bill?
I don't have any.
Don't? Okay. Thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions for our other constable applicants that are here tonight? All right.
Nope.
So is there a motion?
Uh, move that we appoint William Ryerson, Jr. to the position of constable for the term, uh, sorry, I can do them all three together?
Yep.
Yeah. Uh, move that we appoint William Ryerson, Jr., Jack Celia, and Jeffrey Wolf to the constable for the term to expire November thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, it passes. Great. Thank you, gentlemen. Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service to our town.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Can I see a three?
Uh-oh.
Uh-oh.
He bonds.
Bonds. Kind of bonds. All right, while Patty's out doing that, we'll invite up the Climate Action Advisory Committee. Their representatives who are here tonight. Clearing off the screen pretty quickly. Guys, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Hello.
Do you have a presentation?
I think they have a presentation, yeah.
Yeah, do you have it in your decks, or?
We do have it in our deck.
Yeah, it's a few slides. We probably could just talk to it if it's okay.
Okay, that's fine.
Good, well, thanks for the time. This is a continuation of a discussion that I think began at your meeting in September with a couple other items put in there. So we have three topics. Quite quickly, a quick overview for you on the status of the Climate Action Plan, which we're responsible for implementation and advising you all on. A second, because of the progress being made and the dialogue which has taken place over the last few months, a proposal to increase the Climate Action Committee size from seven to nine people. And thirdly, the appointment of Carolyn Stott, who you've all met and interviewed in September, to one of those positions. So just quickly going through, just for your background, the town is making good progress, in our view, on implementing the Climate Action Plan. Over this past year, our committee went through the entire plan in a fairly rigorous process, meeting by meeting, looking at each area, and we've got about half of the sixty-nine line items in the Climate Action Plan in progress. Five have been completed, five of sixty-nine, so it's a start. But we do have a ways to go, and just to give you a flavor, a lot of the actions involve educating the town, promoting activities, being a good sounding board for climate-related activities. So we felt pretty good, having gone through the year reviewing the Climate Action Plan. Any questions on the plan or its progress? That was all I wanted to cover here. Anyone?
I guess sixty-nine items.
Yeah.
Do you, in looking through, do you still, do they all still kind of persist into the next iteration of the plan, or did you retire some? Like, is there, that's a huge number to try to-
Yeah, you're right.
Like, when it went down to like, you know, fifty-two or something.
Yeah, you're right. There's a few here that say "not doing."
There you go.
And "not doing" is code for exactly what you're asking. Things that we're not doing because either they're not relevant anymore, or things have changed a bit. But the vast majority of the items are still valid.
Yep.
And we're still going after all of them that remain.
So now you can claim a bigger portion of success if you're not doing as many.
People may add things, people may add things, though. But no, I think we're making good progress, and really, we're starting to, I think we've got some good momentum against that. And it'll take time, of course, but we've got a lot of engagement. Other questions on the plan?
No questions on the plan. Just, I see this on some of the committees I, I guess, advise her to, but sometimes they have trouble getting a quorum. So do you think having nine members, you'll have any problem? It seems to be a very active committee, so I assume you won't, but.
It's very active. Since I've been there, we had one meeting since twenty twenty. We hadn't get a quorum, we did not get a quorum, and it was the middle of the summer.
Okay, that makes sense.
People were on vacation. But we've had no trouble getting a quorum and basically get eighty-five percent, ninety percent attendance at all meetings, often a hundred percent.
Great.
So that leads us to the first ask of the Select Board is to increase the Climate Action Advisory Committee size from seven to nine. And just some, I think, Rich, you touched on a little bit of it, but there's, I think there's clearly, since the committee was formed, some glowing, some growing community interest in climate issues. There's a lot going on. We started small with seven people on the committee, but since then, we've got excellent attendance, as I mentioned, and a lot of engagement. A lot of people, a lot of engagement, and people willing, willing to work outside of the meeting to do things that are necessary to implement the plan. And I think with that building of momentum, it's important, given our walkthrough of the plan, to add a bit more horsepower. We did look at the possibility, could we just use volunteers on an ad hoc basis to do this? But there really is not that level of commitment when someone comes in for two meetings as a volunteer, or they find something else. So we do think it's an appropriate time to expand it a bit. And so that was the first draft motion is that the Select Board increase the size of the committee from its original size of seven to nine. We'll go to the next, next ask. All right, in September, you all met Carolyn Stott, and she interviewed for the open position with Rachel Chisdy, who was appointed to our committee. There was a dialogue between this Select Board and ourselves about, boy, I wish we could appoint both of them. And we, this kind of led to this meeting, but Carolyn's been attending all of our meetings since then. She's involved with a range of different items for the committee. She's a licensed attorney. She's been involved with two green technology startups, mostly in the area of athletics and textiles and sustainability implications of those. And she's been involved in some best practice events for sustainability within sporting events and textiles. She's been a great addition- She's been a great addition to the committee. And what we would like to do here is to continue the conversation that was started in September and formally appoint her as a holding member to our committee.
Yeah, I remember that conversation with everyone. She was an excellent candidate.
Yeah.
Uh, talking to staff and the clerk. Uh, my understanding is that if we do vote to expand the committee, we have to post those new positions and she can apply. Uh, and we could then appoint her to the committee. But, um, late breaking news today was that, uh, from the town clerk and Patty, uh, who oversees our, um, application process, that she would need, our appointment process, that, uh, we would need to advertise these new positions that were created.
Mm-hmm.
And then she could certainly apply.
How long, how long, excuse me, I'm sorry, I have a cold. How long does the posting need to be up? Two weeks?
It needs to, uh, the whole process needs to be twenty-eight days. So the posting's out fifteen, um, fifteen days. And then, then after twenty-eight days, then you can take the vote and appoint them.
Okay. Thank you.
So we could certainly, it's our pleasure to expand the committee. Uh, Patty can get that posted, uh, and then certainly, I'm sure, I hope that Carolyn will apply.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
You know, certainly, um...
And she would come back in to re-interview as she did before?
Um, we could cross that bridge when we get there.
Okay, okay.
We, we, I mean, I think, at least I remember her interview.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
She's, you know, exceptional talent, um, so...
So we'd actually be advertising for two new positions.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 we could do new positions, is right.
Yep. Any questions or comments from board members?
Do we want to talk about the second position, lighting?
Uh, just in, in, logistically, uh, I think it'd be great to advertise that after the new year so that people have an opportunity to apply and having two positions and being able to drum interest into the second position.
Sense?
So you suggested, uh, start it July, we January second. After posting?
Yes.
Yes.
Or just keep open.
We've got our new calendar. Thank you, Ryan, for our calendar. Appreciate that. Government will continue to run now that we have our calendar.
If you post it on the second, we could review it at the February fifth meeting.
Yep. Yep. Let's play on that. Does that make sense to everyone?
Yes.
Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Move that, um, that the Climate Action Advisory Committee will be made up of nine Winchester residents, including one Winchester High School student.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing done, it passes. And I think you worked with the town clerk about staggering...
Yeah, yeah, we've got, we'll work the terms into the staggered system.
Okay, perfect.
Good.
Great.
Well, thank you very much, all.
For being here.
Thank you.
For all your hard work.
Thank you.
Waterfield Lot MBTA property, just an update. Uh, I think this has to do with our purchase of the orphan parcel that town meeting authorized. That's moving forward, uh, and hopefully we'll have, uh, that in the, um, in the town's possession relatively soon.
Very Christmas.
Yeah, Merry Christmas. Our Christmas present to the town, so... Thank you, obviously, to the MBTA for working with us through that. And hopefully, you know, we can get that done expeditiously, uh, so we can continue to keep our Civicco project on track. Any questions or comments on that? All right.
Look forward to seeing that thing close. More, I'm sure you are more than I am.
A piece of property nobody knew we didn't own.
No longer be the orphan parcel.
That's right.
Right.
Just be the Waterfield Lot.
A formal adoption process.
Exactly.
Outdoor dining policy is next on the list. I don't know if, uh, so Beth took back our comments. Uh, Beth, I don't know if you want to...
Sure, yeah, I just made two, uh, two really minor changes. The, the first being the dates. So, uh, under duration on page three of the policy, um, the dates that we discussed at the last meeting was having the outdoor dining season extend from Monday, April twenty-ninth through Sunday, October twenty-seventh. The application date would be, um, February sixteenth, which would allow us to review them and potentially get them either on your last, your agenda, the last meeting in, um, February or the first meeting in March. Um, and then I added a new section under application process, um, just to be clear that, um, if applicants intend to make any changes after the board approves it, um, before it's installed or after it's installed, it has to, uh, be very clear, it has to be reviewed by staff. And if it's deemed to be a substantial change, it has to come back to the board for approval. Um, and then the application, again, the, um, just updating the dates. That's it?
Thank you.
So I know we got a little bit more feedback, I think at least one or two, um, from some of the merchants, maybe. I didn't know if anybody had the appetite to change the dates, you know, from Sunday, October twenty-seventh ending to like the fifteenth, right after the long weekend, uh, only because it seems like their statement to us was that, um, you know, November and December are their busiest times. They make sixty percent of their money in those months, uh, and would like, you know, to make sure they have parking, um, available. I don't know what people think of that, but that was just brought up in one of the letters that I saw. I think they'd like it to be shorter than that, uh, at least one merchant, but, um, I don't know what people thought.
Did we get feedback from the chamber at all or, um...
So, I think they provided that feedback last week, right?
I didn't talk to Dana specifically, but I think she...
She didn't talk to the rest of the members. She was just providing kind of some...
She's, she was giving her anecdotal in her email. She said, this is what I, you know, I went around to all, you know, a lot of the businesses in the center, um, you know, talked to various items, the, you know, soliciting feedback. And one of the things I heard most about was outdoor dining, uh, and the length of outdoor dining. I think was her, her comments. And it wasn't that the chamber's taking a position, uh, because they really can't, um, because they represent all types of businesses. Uh, but it was more of, you know, for your information, this is what I'm hearing. So it seemed like the merchants, they like outdoor dining, uh, but they have concerns of the length of it. And I think certainly we had that discussion last week. We kind of addressed it. I didn't know, based on, you know, like the one or two letters we got in, uh, this week. Um, I can't remember if there were more, if they came last week, if we wanted to revisit that October twenty-seventh date and make it a little earlier, uh, in the year, um, to like the fifteenth after the long weekend. Or just leave it as it is.
I was a mid-October person from the beginning because of just observation of the use of the space. It wasn't getting used very much from the, like, the middle of October on. Now, that's been walking by first times of day, first days of the week. So I felt like they, the restaurants weren't giving up a whole lot of business and they were still getting good value for their thousand-dollar per parking space investment. So I'm okay to go to, I, I really do think a lot ends after Columbus Day. Right, isn't it usually the tenth, you know, October eleventh or fifteenth or whatever?
Yeah, it's the, so, um, the long weekend's the fourteenth this year.
Yes.
Fifteenth would that be, that Tuesday, so we would give them that.
Right, so practically, it's, I'm just like, thank you for the calendar, too.
Yep.
It's... It is, it is. It's, because we had it ending on a Sunday. If we ended on a Tuesday, it's, it's twelve days shorter, that amendment.
Right, right.
Yeah, that's fine. I think we can go with that. I think we kind of discussed that last time as well. We're just trying to figure out time, so...
Like Halloween, Halloween weekend, the fifteenth, absolutely.
Does the end date, is that the cleared?
Everything's off the road?
Day.
So do I give them to the Wednesday?
Or they're, they're getting things off the road. I mean, I...
Yeah.
As long as they're...
They can't be serving it.
Making, making progress, right?
Okay.
Yeah, I think that...
So we could make it the sixteenth? I mean, give them, you know, Monday's business, Tuesday is breakdown, Wednesday, whatever. If they're in the process, they should be breaking it down by Wednesday. So October sixteenth. Yeah. I'm good with that.
You know, I think we want to have ongoing feedback from retailers and restaurants and residents and, you know, about parking, you know. So just, uh, as long as we're communicating to people that, you know, we're, the outdoor dining policy is, is always going to be somewhat fluid from year to year and we're, we're, we're still kind of, you know, building the plane as we're flying it, so, um, but I think there's been a lot of progress. So thank you, Beth, for making those changes.
Sure.
Could have some additional comments?
Yes.
Yeah, obviously, there's some comments about specific location of outdoor dining that we've received. I mean, obviously, when we get applications in, we always consider them on a case by case basis.
Yes.
All right, so with that change, if people want to, you want to make a motion?
So can we, um, motion to approve the outdoor dining policy with the revision to dates of April twenty-ninth through, um...
October sixteenth?
Twenty-sixth, October sixteenth?
Yes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing done, it passes. So Beth, you'll work, you'll finalize that, get it up?
Yeah, we'll get it out to the, um, folks who've applied in the past, um, let people know if there's anybody new. Um, doesn't sound like they'll be ready for next year, but, um...
Is karma open yet?
And we'll be back in February to revisit.
Great. All right. Moving on, just our, our standard, uh, agenda items that we'll have on for all the meetings. Um, I don't know if there's any update on the capital planning.
Uh, Michelle and I met with Mark and Beth today for a couple of hours, um, talked about the ranking of the projects, some things that would be CPA eligible and, um, getting, uh, talking about the sources and uses, some really, the source, some of the sources and when they would flow in. And, um, Beth's going to provide us some additional information and we're just working towards a presentation, uh, to the board just about three, was it about three weeks or something? It's not that far away.
I think one thing we're going to be looking at sort of around that timeframe in January, when we're talking about capital and in general is revisiting the policy. So sort of separate from any discussion, I think, on the override, but tied into capital funding is taking a vote of the select board to reinstate the policy of, of directing retiring debt back into the capital stabilization funds. So taking that motion or at least that vote before we close out the town manager's budget. Not that there's not a lot of money that's going, but I think we'd like to make that, reinstate that policy. So that's going to be some incremental revenue in some out years, but at least we want to make that a recurring source, whatever it is.
And we'll have information on the retiring debt over, you know, that, that kind of five-year period that we're talking about.
That has some estimates on that, yes. So it's pretty anemic.
Year one is, is dim, but it gets better.
Uh, I thought there was substantial retiring debt toward, in twenty-five, twenty-six, so...
Not from the general funds. I mean, maybe, maybe debt exclusion.
Okay.
But this, this is just general fund debt.
So, just from, uh, looking on our calendar, uh, so is it January eighth? John, is that the presentation date?
Let's see here. Mr. Muji proposed override presentation to the select board. Yes, the eighth.
Okay.
Right on schedule. Feeling good about it. Give ourselves another couple more weeks, talk about it, and then come to agreement.
So you have a meeting, I think, too, I think it was mentioned last time on the first week of January before the budget summit?
Yeah, we, um, canceled that meeting. We just, as we discussed it, and so we're going to socialize that with a group. And if the group sort of, you know, pushes back or feels strongly they want to reconvene. But where we, you know, kind of realized today is that a lot of the decisions are now in the hands of the select board. So, you know, retiring debt policy, if there's an override, what is the amount? What is the timing, um, capital, you know, the town manager's budget is given with direction from the select board. It's just very much, I think, in our court to decide what to do. So we didn't see a reason to meet on the day before the budget summit. I think the budget summit will be enlightening for all of us, uh, but we didn't think there was much more to add to that particular piece of that broader budget conversation. So we're going to tell people it's canceled and then I suppose if we get pushback, we can, John and I can, you know, be caught up to speed and decide if we want to meet for half an hour, but right now it's, uh, canceled.
All right.
Yeah.
That's a good segue into the budget summit. Anything to discuss on that? I, I think invitations went out to...
It did.
We talked about inviting. Uh, I think we talked last time about kind of an agenda. Uh, anything else? Beth, you need from this board?
No, so, um, a lot of, you know, we talked about kind of the assumptions. Um, I've met with all the department heads now. Everybody's got a little bit of work to do to go back and get me their kind of final budget. Then I'll start going through everybody's budget. Um, there are obviously some new requests, so I'm going to strip those out. But what I'll present to the board on the, on the fifth is like the, you know, the budget with every, with the, the request budget and then the kind of town manager's budget that strips some things out. And then we'll talk separately about those new requests from departments and then we can have a conversation. Um, well, obviously, I'll present kind of a range, because the school budget doesn't come in until January thirty-first, so I'll present kind of a range of possible, um, percent increases, um, just so we have some idea of what that does to the overall, um, final number.
Yep.
Any other?
It'll be interesting to see if, having not done one of these in a long time, like with Beth's assumptions, that if we can get reaction from school committee, if we get reaction from income, sort of with some of those assumptions or some of those gargrels, let's see what conversation ensues. It's, it's the town manager's budget. It's, it's our direction, but it'd be curious to see if we get any initial reactions or nods or gasps, whatever. We look forward to that.
It just depends what the numbers are, right?
Yes.
We'll get a reaction.
I'm looking forward to seeing it.
I'm not going for gasps.
This is what it is. You can't control reactions.
Okay. Anything else on that?
Beth, if there's any need sort of that first week, since I don't have a meeting on the fourth, uh, I won't volunteer, John, for this because we'll be doing it our own. But if any need or, you know, desire to look at stuff or review or just even just put eyes on the presentation, happy to.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Just let me know, because I'm, I'm not going away between now and then.
Michelle's available all vacation, uh, to, to work on this.
Given the amount of rain we got today, I may be available all vacations.
That's true. That's snow.
Exactly.
Who goes skiing? Not Beth.
Not any of us, so... Okay.
You just get a lot going on and obviously, you know, working on your budget. So if I can just help, even just check some numbers, let me know.
Thank you.
All right. Great. Anything on the CPA?
Uh, since last week.
Good. And the timing is around January as well, I think, to get some information?
Yep. Yeah, we'll reconvene, um, to finalize the study and then, um, we'll kind of come up with a strategy moving towards spring town meeting.
And Mike, I just want to confirm, like, what I heard is the one point six of which we, in some has to go to certain goals, is at a one and a half percent? That's the, that's the assumption? Okay.
Yep. Um, and then, you know, the, the target for the state match, you know, moves a little bit, right?
Twenty to thirty percent?
Yeah, yeah, so, so it, it, you know, could be near a two million dollar, um, you know, revenue, um, item, you know...
Okay.
Yeah, per year.
So in doing this exercise, is the one and a half percent, you know, is that what you think the committee's, I mean, that seemed to be where the committee was landing for the presentation at fall town meeting?
Yeah, that's what we, we put in the presentation. That's, um, really, um, what the finance subcommittee of the, the CPA group, you know, had recommended. I mean, there's, I, I think we've actually heard, you know, three percent is a number that people would entertain as well, right? And, um, I don't know, it's, it's the, it's a number that we can try to sell to people, right? right? And I'm not, I'm not sure, I think we were comfortable at that one and a half percent range, but certainly, if there's, you know, interest in moving it higher, it, it makes sense, because we're going to need this revenue for, you know, capital investment and, you know, these policy priorities in the future, and having that additional state match is important. But when you look at the property values here in Winchester, three percent is a lot, right? So, especially when we're increasing two and a half percent every year, anyway, so I think the Community Preservation Coalition had recommended, a community like Winchester should be at that one or one and a half percent target, so. And, you know, it's, two million dollars of revenue is substantial, so, on a yearly basis. And as I mentioned before, you can borrow against that revenue as well, so if you have larger projects that, that need to be done, certainly we see, especially when we look at town hall buildings, or some of the preservation of historical assets, they, you know, that may have to happen, so, we'll see.
I almost feel like, I know you didn't say like what the approach is for outreach, but I'm just thinking about, between housing production, communication, potentially capital plan, like, we could literally have like focus group season in this town, like, kind of kidding, not kidding.
Yep.
But we have a lot of January, February, March conversations, you know, it was a town election in there, but, and maybe don't want to hear from the same twelve people in every focus group, but, you know, there's a lot that we're trying to get citizen input on, with our communication plan, and our housing production plan, if, if it's CPA, if there was strong push toward one percent or two, or something, right? It's just, be curious if we had, we'll see, maybe, communication goes first, you know, what worked, who signed up, how the platform worked, is it something we wanted to just leverage for housing production in those community conversations? Be good to see if something works to just keep doing it, and if the, you know, the signup process is easy, and the facilitation goes well, and the duration is right, I just think we can use some of that success or challenge to set us up, because we're going to be doing them for several plans, I suppose.
Yeah.
So, just a thought, I'm just looking at Beth, but I think that probably goes beyond you, but just saying it out loud.
Yeah, I think that's why we wanted to at least have this study at fall town meeting, to just put that out there, for people to give us feedback on, you know, what they, what they thought, and how comfortably it worked, those numbers. The three percent surcharge level does have the benefit of you're included in a separate pool of additional money beyond the first distribution, so it's certainly more of a surcharge on residents, but it's more significantly more state money as well as, as a match, so that's the benefit. If these are things that we're going to end up spending money on anyway, having state contribution at a higher level is, is certainly a target for us. But as we're talking about other overrides, and we're talking, we've got, you know, the Lynch Project still hasn't hit, you know, taxpayers, water sewer rates, all these things, you know, the CPA needs to be successful one way or another, and we've, what we have looked at is how much we've left on the table, you know, over a period of, you know, ten years or so, that, that we didn't pass it last time, and, you know, it's seventeen, eighteen million dollars, right? So, and state match, so it's substantial.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else?
Record time. Consent agenda, that's it.
You can slow it down for a while.
No, thanks.
Sure?
I'm good.